Call to order, the special business meeting of the Board of County Commissioners for Tuesday, September 7th, 2021. Fill all rise and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Ingles, do we have certification of the agenda today?
We do, Mr. Chair. My office has reviewed the item on today's agenda and it meets legal approval.
Thank you, Mr. Ingles. And do any commissioners have any disclosures for any items on this agenda today?
I do not.
No, sir.
And I have none. With that, we will move into our regular agenda, item 2A, a resolution withdrawing from the Tri-County Health Department informing a Douglas County Public Health Agency. Lance Ingles presenting for staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The item on your agenda today, item 2A, is a resolution that would create the Douglas County Health Agency to be called the Douglas County Health Department. The organization of the Douglas County Health Agency would mark the separation from Tri-County Health Department and would create the new Douglas County Health Department. This will occur in steps. If you approve this resolution, this is the first and biggest of those steps. Following this, you will have up to 90 days to name a Board of Health, and then, as this resolution states, that once that Board of Health is seated and has its first meeting, the organization will be created. It will be organized by statute. So this is the first and most important step, but it's a multiple-step process.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ingles. Any questions for county staff?
I have none, thank you.
No, thank you.
Mr. Ingles, I might ask you to walk us through the legal framework associated with the formation of our own county health department, and then perhaps provide some additional insight in terms of the legal framework around where we find ourselves today.
I'll do my best. If I miss something that's important to you, please let me know. Every county must be in a health department. That can be a county health department, or it can be a district health department. For the last 55 years, Douglas County has been in the Tri-County Health Department, and that is one of the options allowed by statute. But counties can also create their own health department, or even a different district health department if they choose. This is a resolution that would create the Douglas County Health Department, so it would be a single county, but county-wide department. The way that process works is if you're having any intent or desire to leave a district that you are in, you must give the district 365 days' notice. Douglas County provided that notice on July 10th of last year. And then you may withdraw and form your own district, or your own county health department after that. But we must have a health department, like I said a minute ago. It starts with the process of a resolution creating the health department. That resolution then starts the clock to appoint a Board of Health, who then has some additional duties, including to appoint an executive director and create bylaws and a local health plan. So where we're at in the process is this board is contemplating whether to create the Douglas County Health Department, and then the next steps would follow by statute. Did I miss anything that you wanted me to comment on?
No, I think that's incredibly helpful. No doubt, we've had some conversations with Tri-County Health over the course of 18 months of trying to manage a global pandemic on a local level. I think it's no surprise to them that they have an entity within their jurisdiction that is now about 350,000 individuals by the 2020 census. No doubt, we began our involvement with Tri-County Health after the 1965 flood, when we joined in 1966, and we were close to 4,000 individuals. I wanted to make sure we highlighted a couple of items, and one of which is whether you can provide some additional insight associated with our ability to move forward based upon that statutory notice of withdrawal. I'm under the impression that at one point, we did offer to rescind that notice of withdrawal, under the condition precedent, the express condition, that they allow Douglas County to retain its opt-out authority, or have some measure of local control associated with that opt-out. We recently heard from the Board of Health that that ability for Douglas County to have that measure of local control and to be able to opt out was unilaterally rescinded by Tri-County Health. And my question for you is whether or not that, in fact, would be a breach of our original intent with regard to staying within Tri-County Health.
Yes, that's certainly Douglas County's position. As you said, we gave our notice on July 10th of 2020. Tri-County Health then started discussing the matter with us, and the issue was one of local control. Douglas County did not feel it had any local say whatsoever on some pretty huge health orders that were coming forward, including the initial one that actually shut down all businesses in the county for a period of time. That was quickly taken over at the state level, but nonetheless, county concerns remained. And so between July and November, we talked with legal counsel and the executive director for Tri-County Health, and really, we reached a compromise agreement. That agreement was that they would have a policy. That policy would allow each of the three member counties to opt out of any public health orders that were essentially county-wide orders, so the big ones, not anything, but the big ones. And in exchange for that, we would rescind our notice of withdrawal and stay in until January 1st, 2023, I believe. So we were in the process, we were following our part of that deal, when a week ago Monday, Dr. Douglas asked the Board of Health to have a special meeting and to rescind that policy with really no notice to, certainly Douglas County. I have no reason to believe there was notice to the other counties as well. But you're right, the agreement was, in exchange for this policy that gave Douglas County some meaningful measure of local control, we would then rescind our notice. They have essentially retracted that deal, and I believe there are very strong legal arguments that we can now rely on our initial notice.
Thank you, Mr. Ingles. So I just want to be clear, based upon that, that certainly this board is of the understanding that the unilateral breach of that express condition precedent revives the original notice to withdraw from July, which would have been satisfied as of July of this year. So it sounds to me, based upon that input that you have explained, we are well within our right to form our own health department, having provided that statutory one-year notice. Any additional questions or comments for Mr. Ingles? Okay, sorry, go ahead.
I have none.
Thank you. So seeing that, I would like to call forward another member of staff, Barbara Drake, who's our deputy county manager, to perhaps provide some additional insight associated with the journey that Douglas County has been on publicly with regard to the creation of our own health department. Welcome, Ms. Drake.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So Barbara, if you could, would you be able to provide us with some insight in terms of the journey that Douglas County has been on, both with regard to the CHAW and the Public Health Advisory Committee, and certainly this fantastic six-inch binder that you've provided associated with local public health?
Absolutely. Thanks, Commissioner. Barbara Drake for staff. So a number of things that we've been putting together in our journey, looking at the ability for Douglas County to stand up its own local public health department. Back in February, we actually began a local public health working group, and that is divided into seven categories: internal services, planning and information management, community health promotion, emergency preparedness response, and communicable disease surveillance, environmental health, nursing, and nutrition. And we called upon staff experts that work, had been working with Tri-County Health and work in all these different areas of our county in concert with our current health department, to begin to look at what are the opportunities and options for developing our own public health agency. And so that was back in February. So each of these subject matter experts from our county have been developing options. This was presented to the Board of County Commissioners back in June with some information about utilization of various public health services that we received from Tri-County Health. In the spring, in April of this year, Tri-County Health also provided to us a detailed report, which is on our website, that describes all these seven areas that their budget is divided into, and it includes information about how many FTEs they have in each of these areas, what that particular area costs in terms of some of the breakdown of what funding sources go into funding those services, and also what is the utilization in each of those areas by Douglas County. So that's available to the public if they're interested in looking at that update from Tri-County that we received back in April. And that really began to sort of inform the work of our local public health working group, to figure out what it would look like if we were to be on our own, what would be the utilization, and what are the key services that we're receiving from public health. And one of the major, major areas that we receive services is in the environmental health area. In addition, we've entered into several consultant contracts. In July, the county entered into a contract with Health Management Associates to provide a community health assessment, and we actually began that work in May. We did an RFP for that process and actually awarded that in July, and the work began. So HMA is conducting a community health assessment, and that'll be followed by a public health improvement plan. Both of those will be delivered to our county by the end of this year, and the community health assessment is going to answer important questions for us. What are the health problems in our community? Why do these issues exist in our community? What factors create or determine health problems? What resources are available to address these health problems, and what are the health needs of the community from a population-based perspective? We felt like this was an important step to take, because we have always been a part of a three-county community health assessment, and we have never had this kind of assessment specific to our residents in Douglas County. I got some data today. One of the first steps that HMA took to begin this community health assessment process was to conduct a survey. As of today, we have had over 5,400 responses to the survey, and they represent all the different areas of our county. So we're seeing very good responses to that. That'll be followed up by a town hall meeting and regional, not regional, but meetings around the county in different locations to follow up on the survey. So that's going to be an important thing for us to have at our disposal to go forward. So in addition to the health management contract, we also contracted with the Colorado Health Institute, and this group is a highly regarded group in our state that was recommended by the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, and they are working to assist us in developing a roadmap for the transition to an independent local public health agency, including identifying key decisions and milestones, and prioritizing high, medium, and low-value programs and services that our residents are utilizing in public health. They'll also help us look at outsourcing options, anticipating funding needs and human resource impacts, and they will help us to identify what additional funding sources will be available to us for a Douglas County Health Department in addition to the current funding that comes from the county. Their work will also be wrapped up by the end of this year. We also contracted with Colorado Environmental Public Health Services, a consulting firm established by former Tri-County Environmental Public Health Services, a consulting firm established by former Tri County Deputy Director Tom Butts, and he has special expertise in environmental health, emergency preparedness, and communicable disease surveillance, and programs and services under that internal services category. And he's uniquely qualified to provide subject matter expertise to us in these very key areas of public health services that are significantly used by our residents. We've also been in communication with Tri County Health in terms of looking at what this transition will look like. We also have been working with the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, and we've reached out to many of our county colleagues in other counties, especially those that are of a similar size to Douglas County, to understand how they structure their public health services, and sort of how they have approached different delivery models for public health. And so, we've gotten a lot of great input from counties all across our state. In addition to that, at the August 10th, 2021 Board of County Commissioner business meeting, the commissioners passed a resolution and created the Public Health Advisory Committee and appointed 11 members to serve on this ad hoc committee. And the committee is serving as a resource for the Board of County Commissioners by providing input on findings or recommendations of this internal working group and our consultants, as well as providing their personal perspective based on knowledge and expertise, and based on their kind of framework and experiences as citizens in our county. And so, we have 11 very varied members that bring a whole variety of expertise to the table. And I believe we had 51 or 52 individuals apply to be on this advisory committee, and the commissioners selected 11, but it just shows the level of interest and also the diverse expertise of folks that came together to serve on this advisory committee. So, those are all things that we have in place, and we've been working on for some time in anticipation of presenting to the commissioners all the options and opportunities associated with this decision you're making today and decisions over the next several months.
Well, Barbara, thank you so much for your incredible work, and certainly the experience that you bring to this particular endeavor. I know it's not just regionally renowned, but really throughout the entire state. Any additional questions for Barbara?
No, sir.
You know, Barbara, could you, did you have a question?
I was just going to say, no, thank you.
Barbara, I know we talked a little bit about this in our work session earlier today, and we've been talking about it for really months, but can you give us a better sense of how many counties in Colorado have their own local public health department?
Sure can. So, the bulk of counties in our state have their own local health department. So, this data was compiled at the very end of 2020, and I think it's still accurate. There may be one change, but right now, there are 33 counties that have a single county agency. There are 15 counties that are part of district local public health agencies. There are five counties that have contractual agreements with another county to provide services. But in all these next cases, each one of those counties still has their own Board of Health, even if they're contracting with another county to provide public health services. There are six counties that have, that combine health and human services together, but with a separate public health director. There's one county that has health and human services directed by a human services director with a health director underneath that. There are three counties where the majority of public health services are delegated to a nonprofit. But again, in each of those three counties, they each have their own Board of Health appointed by the county commissioners. And lastly, there's one county that has two coordinating local public health agencies between their city and county, and that's the city of Denver.
Thank you, Barbara. So, you'll have to ensure that my math is right, but it sounds like about 49 out of the 64 counties have their own local public health agency?
That sounds correct.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then, just, I don't want to get into this too far, but in terms of this incredible amount of feasibility and reporting that Douglas County has done, is there any sense that Douglas County would not qualify for the same state and federal grants that are currently applied for and received by Tri County Health Department?
So, commissioners, this is one of the things that we have been talking with Tri County about, with the CDPHE, and also, this is one of the things that the Colorado Health Institute is helping us sort out. We do know that we would qualify for the state health department's per capita distribution of public health funds, and we do know that that amount of money was recently increased, and that increase will remain intact, and that we would be eligible for that. Some of the other funds that go to public health that flow through the State Department of Health are for specific programs, and they are considered grant programs, although most of them are grants from the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. And so, we believe that we would be eligible for those. There may be some cycles that we have to figure out in terms of when does the current grant period end, because we've been included in those as a three-county district. When does that grant period end, and when would we be eligible to apply for that grant? Now, in some cases, our utilization of some of those very specialty grants has not been very high. So, I think that when I talked earlier about the idea of low, medium, and high-value programs, you know, we would begin to really focus our efforts on the programs that are highly utilized by our residents, and kind of go from there. So, we would likely be eligible for all those, but our Board of Health and our public health infrastructure going forward, those folks would help determine which things it made sense for us to apply for grants in the future around specialty programs. But the general funding for public health absolutely would be available to us as a single county agency.
Thank you very much, Barbara. It's wonderful to hear that Douglas County can avail itself of those funds and pursue what is necessary. Maybe my final question for you and/or our county manager, Doug DeBoer, it would be associated with the current contract that we have with Tri County Health. Can you give us a sense of how long we have paid for services with Tri County Health? And Doug, please feel free to join if necessary.
So, our current agreement with Tri County Health is through a board resolution that was actually renewed back in 2009. So, that's kind of the legal document that ties us to the district health department. At this point, we have paid for services through the end of the year of 2021 as part of our regular budget process, so through the end of this calendar year.
Okay, thank you, Barbara. Any other questions or comments for staff at this time? Seeing none, what I'd like to do is go ahead and provide the Board of County Commissioners with an opportunity to make some introductory comments. And then, Commissioner Teal, if you're willing to read the resolution before us today, following that, we will open it up for public comment. So, are there any initial comments from the Board of County Commissioners?
I do have a letter that I've been asked to read into the record, and I'd be happy to do that now.
Please.
This is from Colorado State House of Representatives, Douglas County delegation, Patrick Neville, Kim Ransom, Kevin Van Winkle, and Mark Basely. It's dated September 3rd, 2021. On March 25th, 2020, we jointly signed a letter recommending that our county commissioners dissolve Douglas County's association with Tri County Health. Our recommendation was issued in response to Tri County's mandates against Douglas County residents, including threats of jail time and heavy fines for noncompliance. On July 10th, 2020, Douglas County Commissioners notified Tri County that they intended to withdraw from the contractual relationship to provide health governance and community services. In order to salvage their role in Douglas County, Tri County offered to continue providing services while giving the commissioners the authority to opt out of mandates that were disagreeable. When Tri County Health violated the terms of the agreement, our commissioners responded courageously to defend the natural rights as well as the values of Douglas County residents. We, the elected state representatives of Douglas County, proudly stand with Commissioners Abe Layden, George Teal, and Laura Thomas, and thank them for their decision to create a local health agency that will act responsibly to the needs and values of our constituents. We thank you, Abe, Laura, and George. Signed respectfully, Representative Patrick Neville, Representative Kim Ransom, Representative Kevin Van Winkle, and Representative Mark Basely. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Thomas, and certainly want to extend our gratitude to our delegation to the House of Representatives for their support here in Douglas County. Commissioner Teal?
Thank you, Chair. I think I would like to make a couple of comments to open. Before being sworn into this position back in January, I spent 23 years in business. And during those 23 years, I was there when deals started and business relationships were built, and I was there when some business relationships ended, sometimes during the whole arc. Sometimes, I was just there at the end. And, you know, every business relationship starts a little different. I mean, sometimes there's champagne and steak dinners when you ink a deal. Other times, you know, you go out for McDonald's. Other times, a group of people just shake hands around a table and make promises to do great. But when a deal goes south, and when a good business deal that is mutually beneficial to all parties begins to come to an end, and it's no longer mutually efficient, it all ends the same way. It all ends with us and them. And, you know, I've been on the them side a couple times. I've been on the us side a couple times. And it is very apparent to me that despite the probably very good 55 years of mutual benefit and interest that Douglas County has shared with Tri County Health, what I saw a week ago yesterday on the Tri County Health Board was very clearly, and guys, you could hear it, there were a number of times when members of the Tri County Health Board said them, "they," and they meant us. We're not the us in the Tri County equation anymore. And I don't know about my colleagues, but I can't sit here. I can't sit here and represent the 358,000 people here in Douglas County and be okay with that. And so, well, to wit, let's begin the process. Mr. Sheriff, it pleases the board, I'd like to read a resolution withdrawing from the Tri County Health Department and forming a Douglas County Public Health Agency. Whereas pursuant to the provisions of 25-1-513-2 Colorado Valley statutes, the county has the authority to withdraw from an existing public health district by resolution at least one year after written notice to the district of such an intent. And whereas the county provided the necessary one-year notice of an intent to withdraw from the Tri County Health Department in a letter dated July 10th, 2020, and whereas pursuant to 25-1-506, Paragraph 2, Subparagraph 3, Colorado Valley statute, upon the withdrawal of the county from a public health district, a local Board of Health must be reestablished by resolution. And whereas, the Board now desires to formally complete its withdrawal from the Tri County Health Department, and subsequently to establish a Douglas County Health Agency to be called the Douglas County Health Department. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, State of Colorado, that effective upon the appointment and first meeting of the local public health agency Board, the Douglas County Health Department shall be the public health agency serving Douglas County, Colorado. Be it further resolved that the Douglas County Health Department is hereby established as the local health agency for Douglas County, and will have jurisdiction and authority over the unincorporated parts of the county and those incorporated parts that do not have their own local public health agency, effective upon the appointment and first meeting of the new board members. Read this 7th day of September, 2021, in Casa Rock, Douglas County, Colorado.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. I'd like to make a couple of comments as the third commissioner here with regard to just some initial thoughts and impressions, and then I'd like to offer perhaps two friendly amendments to the resolution. I wanted to start by making it clear, at least from my understanding, that we're really bifurcating between local control and services. The purposes of today's conversations are really around shoring up that local control. And I will say that this Board of County Commissioners, for 18 months through this global pandemic, has seen the results of working with a three-district public health agency. I want to acknowledge the hard work of our public health officials, the sacrifices that those frontline public health employees make on a day-to-day basis. I think it's important to extend our gratitude to them and the hard work that they've put into trying to serve a truly enormous number of citizens. I think we often say that government is best, that is closest to the people, and we know that Douglas County is remarkably different than Adams County and remarkably different than Arapahoe County. I was actually born in Adams County, and I spent much of my career as a private practice attorney in Arapahoe County, familiar with these counties, and have a significant degree of respect for them and their elected leadership. I'm very hopeful that we can collaborate with the commissioners and the leadership in Arapahoe and Adams to solidify this transition in a way that is successful for all of the stakeholders. But again, I want to emphasize that today is about local control over public health orders and securing continuity of services, ensuring that there at no time will be any gaps when it comes to exceptional public health in Douglas County. With that, I would like to identify just a couple of potential friendly amendments. The first, Commissioner Teal, you referenced in the third recital, 251-506-2, I think you might have said 3, I just wanted to clarify that that was 251-506-2CRS. The other two friendly amendments I would suggest would be a recital number four, that whereas Tri County Health Department has already been paid to continue to provide services for Douglas County residents until the end of 2021, and adding a fifth recital there that whereas the Board has relied upon the express representations of Tri County Health Department, that it will commit to providing services as long as necessary to ensure a smooth transition.
First and foremost, I do think your first noted amendment is correct. Apologies for my misstatement and my misreading. Of course, I do believe, Chair, we should probably get to a motion before considering amendments to the resolution. Of course, I defer to my other colleague if we'd like to adopt those as amendments now.
Well, I'm wondering, we've had citizens waiting for 35 minutes to address this. I'm wondering if it makes sense to hear what the residents have to say and then take care of this other business?
Absolutely, and I wanted to thank all of the citizens who are attending with us today, both in person and online. We can certainly postpone any motions until we've had public comment. It would probably, I would defer to council whether or not it would be preferable to go ahead and have the motion on the floor, or should we begin with, should we start with public comment?
I think the appropriate next step, based on how this board normally conducts its business, is to open for public comment at this point.
Thank you, council. So, at this point, I will go ahead and open it up for public comment. I do want to make a couple of comments about public comment. We do have a number of folks that have signed up here in person. Troy, how many people do we have online?
Commissioner, I currently have one person waiting to speak.
Okay. So, the only thing I'll ask today, first of all, we just want to make sure everybody knows their welcome. Thank you for coming. In Douglas County, we welcome freedom of speech and your opinions. Each citizen speaking will have a total of three minutes, and that's just to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to speak today. I would ask for respect, order, and decorum in this hearing room. We'll allow for that to occur, but at any time, if it is out of order or disrespectful, I will call the meeting back to order. So, with that, let's go ahead and begin with the in-person testimony. I do have a list here, and we'll begin with Angela Thomas. Angela? Angela?
Thank you, Commissioner Leyden.
Sure, and Ms. Thomas, if you could just state your full name and address for the record, please.
My name is Angela Thomas. I live at 106 Elma Avenue here in Castle Rock. I currently serve as the Douglas County Democratic Party Chair, and I am here to remind you that although Commissioner Thomas has stated that everyone in the county agrees with the split from Tri-County Health, there are tens of thousands of us that do not and oppose this action. The survey that was sent out was poorly written at best and gave only the answers you want to hear. It really gave no option for those of us who disagree with you. Currently, we spend $2.5 million going to Tri-County Health Department to manage public health for this county. You want to create your own department, which will require at least $10 million more than our money. You came to this conclusion without the full input of the members of this county. It seems like you are all just mad that the public's health takes precedence over and above you. You don't want to wear a mask. I see that as pure selfishness. I was under the impression that you were supposedly fiscally conservative. What this shows me is that you are simply hypocrites. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. We will move to Mr. Bruce Johnson. Hi, Mr. Johnson, if you can just state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Bruce Johnson, I'm a 16-year resident of Castle Rock.
Thank you. Oh, and then did you want to state your address for the record?
7248 Fallon Circle.
Thank you.
I do not believe it is in the best interests of the citizens of Douglas County to create a separate health department, because I believe the one stated benefit, parents' rights, of doing so does not justify the financial costs or the risks to public health. No matter what side of this you are on, I know we all want to protect our children. We're all good people. I'm hoping and praying that folks who have a different views will continue to listen to explain while I explain why I feel this way. I am a man of faith and an engineer with over 35 years of experience in balancing public health and hundreds of millions of dollars of public expenditures. My expertise in this area has blessed me with opportunities to work around the world in advising utilities. My job requires not only technical expertise, but the ability to relate very complex and technical subjects to managers and leaders in a way that allows them to make the best decisions possible for the public health, safety, and welfare. As you know by now, biological science is not one that assigns certainties to anything. The wonderful complexity of life that God has created never ceases to surprise me with the resilience and unpredictability of life. Microbiology is therefore about the most likely outcomes of a given situation. Will there be exceptions? All the time. For examples, the bodies that God's given us each have, are unfathomably complex and surprise us with amazing abilities all the time. But on average, we know what's going to happen, what goes on with our bodies, and it's very predictable. The situation is kind of like dealing with your car keys. 99% of the time, you know where they're at. But every now and then, you have to go on this panic search for them. There's that exception all the time to it. So similarly, COVID and vaccinations are known by science to reduce the incidence and severity of the occurrence. Any level of masking is well-proven that it reduces the transmission of it to others. That's as clear as anything gets in public health. But is the social price of these vaccinations worth it? I fall back to the examples of Jesus in our military. If I can do something to help our society as a whole, I will, and I'll teach my children the same thing. It's important to take that social responsibility. Lastly, there are considerations of fiscal responsibility that are core to the values of Douglas County. Creating our own health department will cost taxpayers more. This may not be a direct tax, but is a tax nonetheless that you are responsible for. To wrap this all up, when it's possible, the possible benefits of forming our own health department are balanced with public health, two sentences, and taxpayer losses. I do not believe it is in the interests of our residents to form its own health department, and would urge the county commissioners not to proceed down this path. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. With that, we'll move to Anthony Mulley, I think, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, M-U-L-E-I, okay.
You can skip on to the next person.
Okay, would you like to be removed from the list, or do you want to, you do want to be removed, okay. So we'll move to James Poploski. Hello, sir, if you could just state your name and address for the record?
James Poploski, 11989 South Swift Foxway in beautiful Parker, Colorado. Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to speak today. Is all of this really worth it? I just have to ask that question, is it worth it? Unfortunately, I don't think it is. Some facts, we do contribute $2.5 million to Douglas, to Tri-County Health. Of their $11 million budget of county contributions, total budget for Tri-County Health is $44 million, so ballpark, we're paying about 5.6% of that budget, and we're getting, for a fraction of what we pay, we're getting tremendous amount of services. So we get 60 programs and services for a fraction of the cost, and pretty much the whole purpose of Tri-County Health is for Adams, Arapahoe, and Douglas to split that cost. Of those three counties, we are the smallest population, last census that I saw. So, Commissioners, how are we going to pay for employees' offices and equipment on $2.5 million without raising taxes or lowering the services that you offer Douglas County constituents? I don't think you can do it. So honestly, I would ask, if you can, do it, because we'd save a ton of money and maybe lower taxes, but I don't think you can. And honestly, if taxes get raised or services get lowered, I'd honestly ask you guys to step down and resign, because I don't think you can do it. Commissioner Leyden, you brought up the special business meeting on 8/19, it was said, folks choose to get vaccinated or not, health is our choice. I 100% agree with that. The problem is, we're seeing nationwide, in Florida and Texas, people are choosing improperly, not getting vaccinated, not getting masked, not social distancing. And unfortunately, I don't want to be a statistic like Florida or Texas. Fellow residents, can we take a step back? We're in a pandemic here, right? Whether you want to believe it or not, whether you're sick and tired of it or not, we're here. The vast majority of studies indicate masks lower the spread of disease. Kansas, our neighbor to the east, did this on their own constituents. I think 86 counties that masked up lowered their incident rates. Commissioner Leyden, you actually mentioned on a news segment of sorts, you said, if masks work, how come they don't work? They're not a cure, they do lower the incident rate, and that's something I think we should take into account. On August 19, Commissioner Thomas, you said we can opt out of Tri-County if it doesn't serve the best interests of our citizens. You then proceeded to point out to a survey that indicated folks do not want a mask mandate. If you take a drive down to Murdochs in Parker, there are empty shelves of horse dewormer. It's apple-flavoredivermentin, but people are buying it right now because they think that's what they should do. Given the age of disinformation we're in today, do you think leaving Tri-County Health isn't the best for their citizens? I don't think so. Lastly, I would just say, please listen to public health experts. Let's mask up, keep our taxes low, and keep our children safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poploski. So next, we have Robin Webb. Ms. Webb, if you could just state your name and address for the record, please?
Hello again, my name's Robin Webb, and I live at 9917 Hawthorne Street in Highlands Ranch. I have been looking for mask exemptions for my two kids who both have valid medical issues. I have not had an issue finding doctors who agree with me. The problem is, they're afraid to sign them. I stopped looking for my eighth grader because she overheard a kid at her school say, "All anti-maskers should die." If you are teaching your children this stance, you are part of the problem. She's more afraid of the bullying, the nonstop having to justify why she's not wearing one and showing her papers than the negative effects of the mask herself. I've been told to pull my kids and homeschool them more than once. My eighth grader went from happy, gifted, thriving, to suicidal last year because of the COVID measures. I'm no mental health expert, but I am an expert on my kids. Pulling her away from her friends, her school play she got a part in this year, and everything she knows will not help her mental health. The cure can't be worse than the disease. I'm not saying we shouldn't do anything, but mental health and suicide is the predominant health issue that we are facing with our youth. I feel that Tri-County and our school board is completely ignoring this fact, and it is a fact. And I feel like our commissioners are not only saying, "We hear you," instead of ignoring us like everybody else is, they're also saying, "We will fight for you." I think it takes incredible courage to take a stance like this when the political climate right now is so crazy and scary, frankly. To all the parents who are angry but not ready to speak out yet, I get that it's hard. I've lost friends and family over this last year, and so many of us have. If we don't stand up en masse, this will not end at masks. To the people screaming for medical fascism, which is what this is, please at least consider this. If our country goes in this direction, there will come a time that you will have a medical decision imposed on you or your children that you don't agree with. If you give up my right to weigh the risk-to-benefit ratio to make decisions for my family, you are giving up yours too. Ask yourself, do you really believe that the government overall is benevolent? If you do, you need some serious history lessons. You, our commissioners, are warriors. We see what you are being put through to stick up for us. I don't think there's anything crazy or radical about having our own health department. I agree with you that keep government close to your citizens. Tri-County has become exactly what you said. We're not part of them anymore. And I have a question that's probably more geared toward legal. Assuming that you vote yes to separate, assuming we get people who actually listen to us and take away the mandate and put it back in the parents' hands, I just read an email from Cory doubling down on this. They are not going to listen to us no matter what we say. At that point, do we have legal precedents to take legal action against them as parents, or what's next? Mostly, I just wanted to stand up here and say, thank you. I really appreciate you, really, and most people do. I wish more people would show up to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Webb. We'll move to Robin Mendelson. Ms. Mendelson? Mrs. Mendelson, if you could just state your full name and address for the record, please?
Yes, it's Robin Mendelson, and it's 9892 Spring Hill Place. And I'm a 24-year resident of Douglas County, and I also served on the Historic Preservation Board for six years. And I just wanted to express my regret that you're making this decision, because most people in the county see it as, it's a political move. When I was driving down here, I was listening to a radio broadcast, and they were talking about the Taliban taking over Afghanistan. And how is this any different than just pulling something out at the last minute? This is not something that's been, beside the pandemic, this really has not something that's been in the works. And you're talking about instituting several million dollars more the taxpayers need to pay money towards, and that's not really something that has really been planned. And many people in the community, like other people, have said, just because people filled out a survey is really not representative of the county as a whole. And Commissioner Leyden, you in fact said at the redistricting committee meeting that in fact, the county, because of the development patterns, is changing. And watching what happened to Arapahoe County and how they went from a staunch conservative county to now more of a blue county or purple, depending on, you know, the data at the time, I really think that you're misunderstanding a lot of the people in this county. And what, how can you just blow off health concerns? Here's a mask. Okay, most sports now, you have to wear a helmet for. My kids have been in the Douglas County High School Mountain Bike League. You have to wear a helmet throughout. You can't even be on a course as a parent without a helmet on. So how is this any different from this? There's no psychology involved in it. If you ski, you wear a helmet, and many people wear a face shield if it's cold or if it's icy. So this has been completely blown out of proportion. People's lives are at stake, people are dying by, the thousands in the southern portion of our country, because they've been bamboozled into thinking they don't have to wear masks, something that surgeons and nurses and doctors wear all day, and they don't have to get a vaccine. So I would really urge you to listen to the people in the county. Health needs to be considered as paramount, as somebody like Steve Jobs, who had all the money in the world and didn't get a life-saving surgery and ended up dying in his 50s, and just like several conservative radio talk show hosts who didn't get the vaccine are now dead, please put the health and safety of people first. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Mendelson. We'll move to Taryn Castro. Hi, Ms. Castro.
Hello.
If you could just state your name and address for the record, please?
Taryn Castro, I'm at 12392 Chateau Creek Court, Parker, Colorado. Awesome. I just wanted to first voice my complete and utter applaud for how brave you guys have been in taking the steps forward to listen to the majority of your constituents and fight for the ability to have a localized government and for us to be able to make decisions in our community that is significantly different than some of the other communities under the jurisdiction of Tri-County Health Department. I actually have a couple questions that I will be asking, and obviously, this is public comment, and I don't know that you will be able to answer them, but I'm hoping that you can. My first question is, will Douglas County School District have to follow a mandate issued by our new appointed health board, or will they be allowed to follow Tri-County Health Department? I think that's a big question on most people's minds. Second, I read my email from Commissioner Thomas, and in some of that email, it did state that the Tri-County Health Board has to give the majority approval for us to remove ourselves from Tri-County Health, and I'm wondering if that is still the case, and if that's been discussed and what that looks like. Second, what other implications do we have for us to be removed? And please understand, I am absolutely for us to be removed, I just want to understand the implications so that people understand that this is not something that will happen necessarily overnight, and we can keep supporting you guys and keep pushing the ball in the right direction. But will there be other implications, such as the Arapahoe County issuing a potential lawsuit, or at least threatening that, from, again, the email that I received from Commissioner Thomas? And then finally, but definitely not least, there's some major concern about potential corruption from Tri-County Health Department. There was an allegation that was levied on the August 30, Tri-County Health Board meeting. I am wondering if that has ever been investigated by the appropriate body, and if we are still tethered to their governance, that investigation does seem to be warranted with the seriousness of the allegations, and also to further the cause to terminate our relationship with Tri-County Health Department. Public health should not be a political matter, and understanding exactly what happened and is happening in Tri-County, I do believe, actually makes the point of why we should be separating from them in an urgent manner. I hope you can answer some of those questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Castro. We'll move to Carrie Tritley. Hi, Ms. Tritley, if you could just state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Lisa Carrie Tritley. I live at 778 Solstice Way. I've been in Castle Rock since 2003 and Colorado since 1977. I really just want to thank you all, because you are working very hard to bring choice back to the residents in our county, and I don't feel like there's a lot of authority figures doing that for our families right now. Clearly, you've been working on this for over a year. As a military veteran spouse, I find it very inappropriate that your actions are being compared to what's happening in Afghanistan right now, and I do not think you're making this decision at the last minute. I do want to speak for our kids here, because that's where I really want to thank you, is that I know you are standing up for our kids. And again, they are not finding a lot of authority figures to do that for them right now. My daughter, she will graduate this May, she's a senior in a local high school, and when she graduates, she will have had one out of four high school years as a normal high school kid. All the other years have been roadblocked by the shutdowns, the quarantines, the virtual school, the mask mandates, the division. We need to bring choice back to our families and back to our kids. Our kids are the least vulnerable to this disease, yet somehow, they are the most punished. So I appreciate you standing up for them. I hope that what you're doing here today will help other entities in the county make some good choices for our kids and bring choice back to our families. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Tritley. That is all that we have signed up for the in-person speak-in, but if anybody else... That is all that we have signed up for the in-person speaking, but if anybody else is here in person and maybe got here late and would like to address the board, yes, ma'am. Welcome.
Hi, thank you very much.
Sure.
I wasn't going to speak today, but my name is Paige Festmeyer. I live at 6695 Diamond Ridge Parkway. And I am sick and tired of people telling me that this does not affect my kids. I have a perfectly healthy, athletic child of 15, who by the end of last year was suicidal. He has quit one sport. He does not want to go to school. We have not been the last week and a half. I see him slipping back into depression and I have fought to get him normal over the summer. Both of my kids have respiratory issues due to RSV. I have a 10-year-old who after the mask mandates last year had chronic bloody noses. And when I say bloody noses, I mean filling up the bottom of my kitchen sink, waking up in the middle of the night to the sheets covered. He also had migraines when we'd come home with vomiting. He never had any of this until last year. Neither one of my kids want to be there. They're begging me to put them in online school. I am fighting so hard to keep them socially with kids and with people. And if they take this out of our hands, we don't have it. I beg to differ. Thousands of people are not dying. They are pre-existing conditions. I am sick and tired of the media blowing this out of proportion and making this a Democrat versus Republican stance. I have watched my kids suffer for two years. It is ridiculous. I am done doing it. I will not subject them to this anymore. The parents deserve the choice. And if we don't stand up, and we did, we were all here for that meeting, and you saw how many people showed up. So the few people can get up and speak that they want their masks and they want their mandates, it's perfectly easy for them to stay home. My kids can't do it anymore and I won't subject them to that. They can go out and get hit by a car. They can go out and die from someone shooting them one day. We cannot live in fear of a virus. I spent years going to the doctor, paying co-pays. When doctors say, oh, I'm sorry, it's a virus, there's nothing we can do about it, go home, drink lots of fluids and get rest, no prescription needed. But suddenly, we want vaccines. We want, now they're recommending two pills a day to go on top of the vaccine. When is it going to stop? And if we don't stop this mask stuff with our kids and stop with Tri County, who totally disrespected our commissioners, by the way, at that meeting, it was a joke, they will never stop. They are coming for our kids, the vaccines, everything will be mandated, and it's ridiculous. Thank you so much for your time and thank you for standing up for our kids.
Thank you, Ms. Festmeyer. Is there anybody else here with us today? Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. So we have, it looks like we have two folks. Maybe if we can start here with this gentleman or if you want to just, you can both come up. It's all right. Welcome, sir. If you could just state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Ryan Abrish and I live at 4646 South Perry Park Road, Sedalia, Colorado. And I've been a Douglas County resident since 2014. So I guess to start off with, what I'd like to point out is that the mandate from Tri County Health, the COVID response, I guess, that they're making with their mandate is in response to a disease that if you're under the age of 70, according to the CDC's own data, you have a 99, over a 99% chance of survival. It's, once again, it's a heavy-handed mandate as almost all the COVID response measures have been since March of 2020, and it's completely inconsistent. And the points I just wanted to make as briefly as I can is that their mandate on forcing these masks on our children, it's unfair and burdensome to them. It's completely inconsistent with how it's put into place and it's a huge overreach by Tri County Health and general by our government. Beginning with the burden on children, we've already heard about the uptick in suicide and depression that this has caused children over the last year. It takes away their humanity. Our children cannot even see people smile when they walk by. It turns everybody into just faceless, mask-wearing non-persons from their perspective. And unfairly and arbitrarily singles out these kids for their own protection, of course, but they're the class of people that are at the least in need of protection. According to the CDC's own data, only 400 children have died of COVID since March of 2020. And if you take that 400 number at face value, that's almost statistically irrelevant. That 400 isn't stratified for children with comorbidities or other underlying causes of deaths. 500 people a year die of Tylenol, but we're not having great big mandates from our government entities keeping us from accessing Tylenol. It's inconsistent as well. My daughter just came from her school. She had to wear a mask at school to keep her from getting COVID. She's out in the audience right now without a mask because in here, she's not at school, so she doesn't need one. I think with regard to inconsistencies with all these measures, we always talk about walking into a restaurant, having to wear a mask and then take it off when you sit down. It's the same thing with this mandate. It's completely inconsistent. At a church, for instance, my kid can sit in and with all the other congregants, listen to the sermon, and then once she leaves the sermon and walks across the building to go to Sunday School, she has to put a mask on. It's completely dumb. And lastly, it's just a huge overreach. Tri County Board of Health is an unelected group of people who can impose their will on us and they don't have to be held up to any sort of election in order to vote them out and as some sort of payback for what they did. I think that I'd like to applaud you guys for doing what you're doing. I think what they did was a big overreach and it wasn't well thought out. And I guess my big question over this is whether or not, what happens afterwards? When we leave Tri County Health, is there a mandate that they made? Do we have to abide by it? Or is it void immediately so that our schools and that the other entities have to abide by it if they know which direction they're able to take next? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Abrish. Yes, ma'am.
Hi there. My name is Teagan Braun. I live at 6085 Millbridge Avenue, Castle Rock. First of all, I just wanted to say thank you so much for hearing all of us today and for the consistent work you do, Laura, Abe, and George. We truly appreciate it. And I represent myself and all of the freedom-loving advocates who you have seen show up by the thousands over the weeks to advocate on behalf of our children and our freedom and these arbitrary mandates. We have been begging for true data and real Doug Co stats to be listened to in order to masking, in regards to masking our children. Some of these stats that I will share, just a few quick ones. We have seen six deaths under 18 in Tri County since the pandemic started, one in Douglas County. We are provably, or we, our children ages up to 18, are provably the least at-risk demographic. And according to Polis's latest update, 17 kids 18 and under last week statewide were in the hospital with COVID. This is a huge deal in a population of 5.75 million people in Colorado. For transparency's sake and clarification, I want to ask you a few questions. And first to lay some groundwork, Douglas County School District has shown that they are not only not on board with mask choice, but they're willing to go outside of your beliefs and your opt-outs and mandate masks to the fullest extent with emails to Douglas County parents saying that it's illegal to send students to school without masks and it is legal for them to mandate masks. I would politely remind everyone that our constitutional parental rights supersede a mandate not put forth by legislature in our Colorado Capitol. It is not a law. This also happens to be the tip of the iceberg as we have heard certain board members say that they are for this COVID injection, of which there is zero trial data for 16 and under. We have seen correspondence and communication that says from them, when this becomes available and able to mandate, that they are on board for that. As a parent of four children, I refuse, and that is my right, my choice, to refuse. What the question is then, like Taryn had mentioned, will this separation put into place legal authority over Douglas County School District? Are they a state-authorized entity, a county-authorized entity? And also, would you allow a legal team to sit down with your legal team, a legal team of which represents many of the parents in this county, to have eyes on the line items of this separation to then ensure that there's no loophole for Douglas County to get away with opting out?
Thank you, Ms. Braun. Is there anyone else here with us in the gallery that would like to share their comments? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Renee Cattiel. I live at 1881 Blue Sage Lane, Castle Rock. I am a 20-year resident of Castle Rock. And I'm disappointed and upset by the trends that I'm seeing. I am a healthcare provider, a nurse practitioner. I am watching my colleagues in the hospitals sacrifice their family time, their own health, their devotion to their career and helping others, and they are falling apart because of the abuses of society and not recognizing that we have a very real and present clear danger with a pandemic. This is not just some other virus. This is a very lethal, fast-spreading and a virus that will morph and change and develop variants that will continue to be damaging and threatening to all of our lives for the years to come unless we join together and fight this with very proven, real and scientific, scientifically-proven effective methods. The virus can be stopped, but we have to mask. We have to vaccinate, number one. That has been shown to stop the spread of the virus and to present or to provide us with antibodies against it if it gets in our body. If we can all vaccinate, which we can, it's available to us, that would be step number one. Number two, masking is highly effective. If we would do it, all of us together, for three months, even six months, we could stop the coronavirus from spreading and becoming such a dominant factor that we have to all live in fear of every single day. The people who don't like their freedoms infringed upon, I would say I breathe the same air they breathe. I have rights. I would like to be able to go out in public and not worry about coronavirus being spread through respiratory means because they won't wear a mask. Kids are very capable of wearing a mask for a short period of time, up to six months. If we all do it together, we're all on board together. Kids are definitely susceptible to the Delta variant. They are getting it, they're contracting it at a much greater rate than any other time in the pandemic. They are sick. ICUs are full, in certain states more so than ours. I would argue that Colorado has a better situation than other states because more people are vaccinated. So the children and the people who don't want to get vaccinated are enjoying a herd, a factor of herd immunity where they're not getting as sick as they could be because a lot of people are vaccinated and people are trying to mask. I also would say of your health advisory--
Ma'am, I'm sorry, but your time is exp-- if you could wrap up? You can go ahead and finish your thought, though, please.
Well, I just wanted to say of the health advisory board that you have put together, there's not one clinician, not one clinical person on that board that works in, with hands-on care for patients in the hospital. And I feel like it's a major oversight. I also think that the way you chose that board was your selection, and it's clear that you guys are all on the same page. So I feel like the selection of the health advisory board or that committee is biased from the start. So I don't think that you're getting a very full perspective of what the community would like or what the concerns are with separating. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you very much. You bet. Okay. And is there anyone else here in the audience with us, though? Yes, sir.
My name is Miles Cortez. I'm actually an Arapahoe County resident, but I've got children that live in Douglas County and children that go to Douglas County Schools. I want to voice my unwavering support for what you all are doing. I believe that the Tri County Health Board is corrupt, politically driven, and I think you are absolutely within your rights to separate from them and it's the right thing to do. Douglas County was a small county when they first entered, like several thousand residents, when y'all first entered into Tri County Health. And it makes all the sense in the world for you to leave at this time. But I want to just correct a few facts that some people have said. So these are statewide numbers, okay? And these are from the state's own website, CDPH's website. Zero to nine-year-olds are 11 and 1/2% of the population, okay? They last week were 4.8% of the cases in hospitals, or cases in the, not in hospitals, in the positive cases. So they are provably the least-at-risk demographic. By definition, if you go through all the different demographics, they are provably the least-at-risk demographic. 10 to 19-year-olds are 13% of the population. They were about 12% of the cases, so more on par for what they should be. But from a death perspective, okay, because, I mean, people get sick. We all get sick every year. People get sick. Here's some death numbers for you. Since the pandemic began, zero to nine-year-olds, 11.61% of the state population, they are 0.06 of the deaths in the state. There are four deaths for zero to nine-year-olds and they're masked, and the two to nine-year-olds are all masked. 10 to 19-year-olds, so some kids that are already out of school, the 18 to 19-year-olds, 13% of the state population, 0.22% of the state deaths. Since the pandemic began, 16 deaths. So you're talking about 25% of the state population of Colorado. Okay, so you're talking about, on quick math in my head, about a million and 1/2 people. 25% of 5.75 million people, you're talking about 20 deaths, 19 and under. You are masking these kids for, they may get it, okay? They're getting it at lower rates than the older people. They may get it. It doesn't make them sick. It makes them, my kids all had COVID. You could barely tell. They wouldn't have missed a day of school if they hadn't tested positive. 20 to 29-year-olds even are 14.66% of the state population and they're 0.84% of the deaths, 60. So you're talking about 29 to zero. You've got a grand total, this is as of the end of last month, as of August 31st, okay? You're talking about 80 deaths in people 30 and under, and you're masking thousands of people. You're letting Tri County Health, I'm 1,000% supportive of you. Tri County Health is masking, you have five politically-minded people driving healthcare decisions for a million and 1/2 people, a couple hundred thousand students, and it's their agenda and it's not data-driven analysis. They are gaming the data to drive their political agenda, and I applaud each one of you for what you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Cortez. Anybody else in the audience? Yes, sir.
Josh Dickens, I'm at 5285 Blue Lunar here in Castle Rock. My family and I just recently moved back to Douglas County after spending time out of state, and I had no intention of coming up here this afternoon, but I want to thank you for the work that you're doing. Know that we support you. I've talked to many, many of my neighbors. We are all grateful to have such wonderful commissioners that listen, that care, and that pay attention to the actual data, true analysis of what is happening in our communities. And we are adamantly against any mask mandates in the schools. I have a daughter with special needs who can only communicate through facial expression. If you're wearing a mask-- If you're wearing a mask, she will not communicate with you. She can't. She does have pervasive learning disorders. We had her enrolled in one of our schools here in the special needs program. However, when Douglas County Schools decided to mask staff, students, everyone in between, we had to withdraw that enrollment. Our other daughter was worried that she would be the only one going to a charter school with no mask on. Thankfully, that has not proven to be the case in the program that she's in, and she is thoroughly enjoying the classes she's a part of. We're primarily a homeschool family, but we highly encourage you to continue forward on this path. We will support you 100%.
Thank you, Mr. Dickens. Is anybody else here with us in person that would like to share a comment? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move to online comment. Troy, would you like to open that up for us?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner. I do have five people in line to speak. The first one will be Glenn Whitten. Glenn, you are unmuted. Go ahead.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Glenn Whitten, W-H-I-T-T-E-N, and I reside in Highlands Ranch at 2773 Rock Bridge Drive. Several speakers had questions. I have questions, too. I know you can't answer them right now, but I do believe they deserve answers before you decide to sever TCHD from Douglas County Public Health Services. You have had a year to decide whether to do this. What have you been doing all that time? Where is the plan we were promised? What happens to TCHD and our county partners? Or is that not a consideration? Have you discussed any of this with Arapahoe and Adams County Commissioners? Why did you not read into the record the letter from Arapahoe County asking you to slow down? Your citizen surveys show the majority were for staying with TCHD. Why are you ignoring that and saying, "We heard you"? How long do you intend to contract with TCHD? Were they agreed to provide services? How will you staff? How long would that take? Which buildings will be used? Will you attempt to kick TCHD out of current Douglas County facilities? Will you try to hire away TCHD staff? We are currently funding TCHD. Will there be an overlap where we fund both TCHD and a new department? We've had no fund, problems funding TCHD. Why will we now need to request other public funding? How much more will it cost to fund a new department than TCHD? Will there be oversight in the new department? How will that be done? Will the public have input to how oversight is conducted or who populates the board? Do other public health agencies have county commissioners on their board? Of the advisory board, do any members disagree with the plan to withdraw? Will you allow the new department to independently provide health recommendations and policies? Or will everything be subject to commissioner review? Will the new department be able to rapidly implement public health orders? Or will they be subject to board approval? Will current TCHD services be continued? Will the new department charter be the same as TCHD's? If not, what are the differences? And finally, what happened to the recommendation of the study group you commissioned? I believe these are reasonable questions that deserve answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitten. Troy, we'll take the next online guest.
Thank you, Commissioner. It's Kira Storozhev. Forgive me for messing up your name. Go ahead. You're unmuted.
Oh, that's fine. Thank you so much. Yes, my name has been spoken of in many different ways, but my name is Kira Storozhev. It's S-T-O-R-O-J-E-V, and I live at 10626 Clarkville Way in Parker, Colorado. I am a mother of three. I'm also an entrepreneur. I currently have a daughter who is at home doing remote learning because at her school they had an outbreak of COVID and were told that they had to be at home for at least a week and a half. We all got COVID as a family back in February, so I know what it feels like to have it. It can last a long time. Mine lasted for several months with shortness of breath and coughing, so it was rather scary, actually. I currently have a friend I brought to the hospital who has COVID, and he was just put on a ventilator yesterday. I've been asked today to be his medical proxy because he's not able to breathe on his own. I have a concern because when my daughter's class had an outbreak, I brought her to get tested at the local facility here in Parker. When I got there, there was a line. I talked to the attendant, and he said over the summer there were 20 to 30 tests they did per day, and now they're doing 300 to 400 a day. And he said they're primarily from people from the schools. So on a practical level, I do have a real concern about the outbreak that is happening amongst kids that is showing up in terms of the number of tests that need to be taken. So it's just a practical concern. I feel like the train has already left the station in terms of the break from Tri-County. So I just want to address how this will be handled. I really appreciated all the comments previously, the last person who spoke. So I do have a concern about the number of medical professionals on board in terms of being advisory level. I would like to see that increase. I am concerned about how we're going to bring this together in a very short period of time. I really would prefer that we had more time to put this together when there is a consideration for pulling together private and public. So that is something new, which hasn't been done before. It would be great if the public could see that more spelled out. And concern, one concern is that is this going to be costing the public any money additionally out of pocket if we bring in private entities as well? As well as, will our taxes go up due to this? And also, we need to be concerned, I think, for the other counties that will be greatly affected by this by a quick departure that they hadn't expected from Tri-County. I think it would behoove us to spend more time pulling this together and lengthening it. I do feel it was kind of a knee-jerk reaction when Tri-County Health mandated the mask mandate, that there was a response quickly to break from Tri-County. And so I'd like it to have a consideration, looking again at the timeframe of doing this break. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Storozhev. Troy, we'll go with the next guest.
Okay. The next speaker is Matt Bateman. Matt, you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Great. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello. Are you able to hear me?
We sure can. Go ahead.
Excellent. Hi, my name is Matt Bateman, B-A-T-E-M-A-N, and I live at 16810 Amberstone Way in Parker. I'm speaking to you this afternoon not as someone with opinions on masks and COVID. After all, I'm not a medical expert, but as a taxpayer watching my dollars being spent before my very eyes. This is the most expensive example of taking your ball and going home that I've ever seen. We've been with the Tri-County Health Department for 55 years. After a spat about masks, masks? We're going to take our ball and go home? Is this the will of the people? We don't know. We don't know, do we? All we have is an unscientific poll that Tri-County offered up, which was admittedly terrible. We have passionate activists making noise in both directions online. We have parents acting like children at school board meetings. But to my knowledge, we have not determined if this is the will of a vocal minority, the will of you three commissioners' personal views, or the actual will of Douglas County citizens in general. Not those vocal minorities on either end, but the general population. This cost is going to skyrocket. The overhead will skyrocket. And how is this being managed? To my understanding, that two of the three of you have appointed yourselves on this new medical, on this new health board. Douglas County is a community of fiscally conservative citizens, and with swift action, the three of you are going to vote to increase our costs many times over to cover the cost to run a new health department. So I ask you, please, commissioners, take a moment. Let's put the emotion and, in some cases, the politics aside, and see if this is truly the will of the people. Not just those against masks, but the everyday citizens of Douglas County. Something this big should be put up to a special vote, or at least a scientific poll of our community at large, not that poll that Tri-County tried to pull off. And then share those results. Let the community decide if pulling out of Tri-County makes sense and is a cost that we all want to bear. Once these masks are long over, we are stuck with another large expense for us, the taxpayers, to cover year after year. Small government only works when it's smart government. So in closing, please table this vote today, take the time to think through this, and find out if the residents of Douglas County, all of us, are really ready to pay for this going forward. Thank you for your time, commissioners.
Thank you, Ms. Bateman. Troy?
All right. Next speaker is Brandy Bradley. Brandy, go ahead. You're unmuted.
Hi. Can you hear me? Yes, we can. Awesome. Brandy, B-R-A-N-D-I, Bradley, B-R-A-D-L-E-Y, 6638 Lakeside Circle, Littleton, Colorado, 80125. I am a mother of four boys, two in Douglas County Public Schools, two that I have pulled out of the Douglas County Schools and put them in charter schools because I am completely disappointed in the Douglas County School Board again and again and again. I'm trying to figure out all these healthcare workers that are calling in, since I'm a healthcare worker myself. Where's the data and the statistics and the evidence? You talk off the cuff. You don't present any evidence. I have begged Dr. Douglas for statistical evidence as a healthcare worker. My patients demand that from me. He says there's a rising cases. I'd like to know, is that four cases? Is that eight cases? Is that 100 cases? And the nurse practitioners that call in, the other doctors that are calling in, where is your evidence? We prove evidence. We're statistically saying to you guys, this is what's happening in Douglas County. There's been one death between the ages of zero and 18. So why aren't we demanding these parents that are speaking out on public comment to base their stuff based on facts? The CDC, from February 2020 to May 21, 2021, excuse me, zero to 17 years of age, there was 27 million infections with 332 deaths. For those of you who can't do math, it's 0.001% fatality rate. More people have died from the flu. There's no threat to our children. I see people on the Tri-County Board at Rockies games and Broncos games and painting parties, all mask-free. I see adults living their life mask-free. Those are the people that are spreading the Delta variant and the COVID and everything else. But we're willing to say that my two-to-18-year-old children have to mask up? I want to know where the logic in that is. It's so frustrating to me that these parents can get on and say that the parents that are for freedom of choice are anti-maskers and were extremists, were these horrible selfish people. I have a child with mental health. Guess what? He can't ask for help with a muzzle covering his mouth. We had a suicide in the first two weeks of school at Thunder Ridge. These kids don't mean anything, but immunocompromised kids who can vaccinate or wear masks mean more than the mental health status of our children? This is ridiculous, and I'm tired of being called selfish. I applaud the three of you for finally standing up to the minority in this community that don't back up any words with what they say. They don't back up any facts or any evidence with what they say. And if you want to raise my tax dollars, however much you want to raise them, you do that because my children matter more than any amount of money there is on this earth. These people have no statistical evidence, and they try to back it up by threatening and saying bullying remarks against parents that are for freedom of choice, and I've had enough. I want Dr. Douglas to speak out about numbers. I want Tri-County to stop being the pot calling the kettle black, living their lives while they're putting a muzzle on our children. I have had enough. I am over it. It's time for us to start stepping out and stepping up for our children who have mental health problems, who just want to be around their friends and socialize like normal human beings, like their parents are doing, like their friends are doing. Please start standing up, just like you guys are doing. This is why your yards were in, or your political signs were in my yards, because you are the only three listening to the majority of Douglas County residents. Do not listen to the minority. Those people aren't even using evidence to back up their words. I want to thank you guys from the bottom of my heart for speaking out for my children and for supporting the majority of parents in Douglas County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Troy?
Okay. Next, Commissioner. Yes, thank you, sir. Katie Lute will be next to speak. Katie, you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. My name is Katie Lute, L-U-T-E, and my address is 4592 North Blazing Star Trail, Castle Rock, Colorado. Hi, Douglas County Commissioners. I just want to start by saying I'm so thankful to each of the three of you for everything that you're doing to serve your county residents. You never cease to stop working for us, and I am just truly amazed by the three of you. As a Douglas County resident and mom of three young kids, this Tri-County Health Department overreached mask mandate affects my family greatly. It is absolutely awful to be put in the position to have masks forced upon my young children for eight hours a day while they're just trying to learn and get an education. It breaks my heart as a mom. They do not deserve a mask mandate for a virus that mainly affects the elderly and the sick. They deserve to be kids, and they have already paid far too great a price throughout this entire pandemic by sacrificing a year and a half of their precious childhood. No more. It stops now. I urge you to continue to pursue this immediate departure from the Tri-County Health Department. They do not listen to nor serve the needs of the residents in this county based on their nonsense mask mandate. They aren't basing this mandate on facts or stats. Their very own data points to no need for mask mandates for our children. Last I checked the other day, there are zero children hospitalized with COVID in our county, yet all children ages 2 to 18 must mask up to be good citizens. I will not stand for it. My children have attended school this past week maskless, and they are brave and bold. It's crazy that a five-year-old and a seven-year-old are brave and bold enough to demonstrate the civil disobedience due to their own personal convictions against masking. It's their body, and it's their choice. Commissioners, I applaud you for working swiftly to leave Tri-County Health Department and start your own new Board of Health. We are depending on you as a family, and we thank you so much for these actions. My two girls are strong and brave, and I look forward to the day that they don't have to be brave every day just to have their smile seen. I support you, and I will continue to cheer you on. And my 11-month-old baby, also, I hope someday he never has to wear a mask. Thank you so much, and I relinquish the rest of my time.
Thank you, Ms. Lute. Troy, do we have anyone else online?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner. I have, it looks like our final person, unless we have someone else that raises their hand, would be Chris Chandler. Chris, you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Chris Chandler. My address is 10311 Rustic Redwood Court in Highlands Ranch. I have been a resident for Douglas County for over 30 years. There's much said about, said by others that does not need to be repeated, so I will make my statement short. You're supposed to be leaders. You tell conservative ideals of low taxes and people's choice, and you are contradicting both in your unilateral decision to leave Tri-County Health. By taking this decision away from your constituents, you are taking away your citizens' choice and are creating additional unknown expense for your citizens in a ploy for political points. If an opposing party were to propose this, it would not be tolerated. If you are truly genuine in your conservative beliefs, you would provide both the economics and the choice of this decision to the people of Douglas County via a vote. If the people of the county want to leave, so be it, but it should be our choice, not yours. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chandler. Troy, do we have anybody else online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no other hands raised.
Okay. Let me just open it up one final time to anybody here in person. Last opportunity to share a public comment. Okay. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to the board for further discussion and/or a motion.
So thank you to everyone who spoke. I was writing notes about several of you to respond to. First of all, the mental health issue we hear in our kids, I believe, is real, the concern. Like my fellow commissioners, I have been inundated with people who have figured out how to reach me through Facebook and my campaign website and my home phone number, and that's great. That's why I'm here, to listen to you. So last week, a father texted me, and he said, "I need your help." My three kids went to school, and we told them that we, we'd given them all the reasons about why they did not need to wear a mask, but the choice was theirs. So their littlest one saw her friends put on her mask, their mask, so she put on hers. The 13-year-old and the eight-year-old were very respectful and said, "No, thank you," all day long. At the end of the day, the eight-year-old had done all of the tasks that she was supposed to, so when she went up to get her candy, the teacher told her she couldn't have her candy because she wouldn't wear a mask. So the dad texted me, and he said, "What should I do? Should I contact the school?" And I said, "You know, if I were your little girl, I would want you, I would want to see you do that, but that's your choice." But here's the rest of the story. I'm going to come to your house- to your house Friday night and I'm going to bring your little girl candy. And he said, you don't have to. And I said, yes, I do, because that little girl is brave. She's courageous. And I want her to know that another adult recognized what she had done. So Friday night, my husband and I went over to their house. We brought candy for all three kids. We brought pizza. We brought pop. And we spent four hours with the most enjoyable family. I learned something listening to the grandparents, the parents, and those children. And those children are scared because of what they are seeing going on in their school. They are brave because their parents have taught them well. I got another phone call from a friend of mine whose fifteen-year-old daughter, two weeks ago, was suicidal. They had to call nine-one-one. She went to an in-person patient hospital. They let her out to go to school and she had to wear a mask. She came home that afternoon and she was just hysterical because she couldn't hear the teacher and the teacher couldn't hear her. They needed to take that fifteen-year-old girl back to therapy that night. We need to look at the whole child, and this is my concern. I know we have parents that want everyone in the school to wear a mask. We know that there are other people who don't want their children to wear a mask. And that is what we are trying to figure out. But here's where I think I'm coming, here's where I am coming down on, is the science and the data. I have not seen, we just got a report just before we sat down from the person who sends us data every day. Again, today, there are no pediatric hospitalizations in Douglas County. We can't keep everybody from getting sick. I don't hear anybody talking about immunity from people who have gotten sick that have natural immunity. I don't hear talk about that when we hear talk about the science. I hear lots of talk about taxes going up. First of all, we have Tabor in this state, so my fellow commissioners and I can't just raise your taxes because we want to. If we need to raise your taxes, we have to come and ask you first. I have been involved in this budget for five years and we have got excellent people managing your tax dollars. I believe that we have the ability to do this and do this well. Douglas County has more citizens served per employee than any other government in the front range because we use the private sector for our services. We are lean and mean. And this new public health department that we are going to build in Douglas County, I believe is going to be a model that people across the country are going to look at to streamline their public health departments as well. Two years ago, Douglas County separated from Arapahoe County in our judicial district. In 2025, we are going to stand up JD twenty-three, the first brand-new judicial district, that's the District Attorney's Office, that's been formed again since the sixties. I see a trend here. We are no longer eight thousand people. We are a population that deserves our own services. We're getting our own District Attorney's Office. It's time for us to get our own public health department. Going along with the talk we hear about fiscal responsibility, I like this trend. I hope more and more of you continue to talk about fiscal responsibility as we go forward because you will see that Douglas County is a model at taking care of your tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Teal?
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate it. Well, first of all, thank you all for coming out. I mean, obviously, there were two sides of the story that we heard from all of you. I don't care what you were advocating for. I appreciate you all coming out today to speak to us and give us your opinions. It was really great. Bruce Johnson, good seeing you again, my friend. Bruce's wife and I were colleagues for a number of years, so it's good to see you again. Thank you for coming out and lending your opinion today. Bruce, you pointed out something, just as Mr. Popovich did, pertaining to what is the cost? What is the, you know, what is this going to cost us? You expressed concerns about taxes going up, about costs going up. I'd like to talk about that, but before I do, I'd like to tell you a little bit about where I was in nineteen eighty-three. In nineteen eighty-three, I was an eighth-grader at Heath Junior High in Greeley, Colorado. I had Algebra One that year. And my algebra teacher was a gentleman named Dave Young. And Mr. Young was one of those great teachers that you remember. I mean, he was kind of, not a tall gentleman, but he had a bright red beard and bright red hair, and even then, his hair was thinning a bit. I believe he was in his thirties at the time. And Mr. Young taught me one of the most important lessons I ever learned in my life, and it was a math lesson. And he started off day one by putting up, I swear to God, a twelve-foot-long algebra equation. And of course, everybody, you know, you all remember algebra, how parentheses and vermicuaths and square roots and these limits. It was, I swear to God, a twelve-foot-long, letters three inches high, so you could see it from the back of the room, because my name is Teal. So I was sat at the back of the room, and math problem. And he said, who wants to take a shot at this? And nobody raised their hand, even me, who's known to be, think I'm the smartest guy in the room, particularly when I was in eighth grade. I didn't even take a shot at it. And he said, you know, when you have a complex problem like this, it can always be solved by boiling it down to the simple math, breaking it into pieces, breaking it into parts. And of course, those of you who have had the misfortune to have to do algebra in your lives, much like me, in your professional lives like me, you know that algebra actually gives you the means to do that. So I'd like to hearken back on my friend Bruce and Mr. Popovich's concerns. And Mr. Popovich, I appreciate you doing your research, bringing out the fact that Douglas County pays two-point-five million dollars to Tri County every year. Between the three counties and Tri County, our county contributions account for eleven million dollars a year. You didn't point out that Tri County has a forty-four million dollar per year budget. I would like to just correct you. In terms of last year, actually, the budget for Tri County Health was fifty-five million dollars because they did bring in eleven million dollars through the American Rescue Plan. That was their share of what Congress decided to disperse, to include, let's not forget, the sixty-eight million dollars that was dispersed directly to Douglas County. So channeling, if I can, for a second, Mr. Dave Young from far away back in Greeley, Colorado in nineteen eighty-three. If we do a really simple calculation and of what is three hundred and fifty-eight thousand people, and you divide that off of the fifty-five million dollars in Tri County Health, you know, you come out with something just over seven dollars per person. That's our contribution. Excuse me. When you do it, though, with the idea of the forty-four million, well, you still come out really right around seven dollars per person. Well, you know, that sounds, that sounds great. That sounds like no problem. The only problem is, quite frankly, is, you know, and excuse me, I misstated just a second ago, it's the three hundred and fifty-eight thousand divided off of the two-point-five million dollars gives you about seven dollars per person. The only problem is, the question that's hanging there, I don't know, was hanging there for me, I think it was a question I asked right off the bat. If the county's put in eleven million dollars to Tri County's eleven million, excuse me, forty-four million, that we know now to be fifty-five million, well, where did the other thirty-three million? And then now we know, where did the other forty-four million come from? Well, that's easy. We know that of the forty-four million, eleven million came from the federal government in the American Rescue Plan. So, but where'd that other thirty-three million come from? Well, it's simple. It's actually beautifully simple. It came from state and federal revenue sources. We heard our deputy county manager, Barbara Drake, fill us in that there is a straight revenue source that goes to local health departments from the state based upon our population. Okay, cool. And then there are other. We know now, after some of the research that went into the famous six-inch binder, that there are other federal sources that come in and there are other state sources that come in to Tri County Health. It was said earlier that it's probably going to cost us another ten million dollars to have a county health department. Okay, so, you know, it's going to be about twelve million dollars. So really, it's going to be about nine-point-five extra million dollars. Where are we going to get that? That's a question a few of you asked. I don't think there's an intent to raise taxes right now. And let me tell you why I don't think there's an intent to raise taxes. Because the very revenue streams that Tri County made use of to source the thirty-three million, forty million dollars, forty-four million dollars, actually, guys, the county's going to be able to make use of those resources as well, just like deputy county manager Barbara Drake briefed us before. When you look at it, it sounds like a good deal. It sounds like we're getting a great deal from Tri County. It's seven dollars per person. The only problem is, it's not seven dollars per person, because that's really just a fifth of the cost that we all paid last year. It's actually more like thirty-five dollars per person. That's really, because federal money, guys, that's your money. Those are your taxes. You paid into that. State funds, guys, those are your taxes. You paid for that. Everybody paid their income tax, right? I paid my income tax. Everybody paid a sales tax when you went to the grocery store, when you went to the hardware store, when you went to the toy store. So that's your money. So really, again, trying to make simple Greeley public school math, if we factor it in, last year, we all paid in about thirty-five dollars per person last year. I got to tell you, guys, we're doing the work right now. We heard, again, Barbara give us the brief on the community health assessment. That's closing today at nine PM, I believe, if I recall properly. When we talk about the services that the county health department is going to provide, I want to be driven by the data that we get from that community health assessment, where we go into the community and the community tells us what our priorities are, what our real needs are. We're doing that work right now for everyone, for all of you here in Douglas County. Are we going to be able to keep it to seven dollars per person from your property tax? I don't know. I don't think we know that yet. We haven't completed that work. Are we going to get you down from paying thirty-five dollars per person? Actually, it's a misnomer because of very simple calculation of three hundred and fifty-eight thousand divided by twelve million gives you thirty-three dollars per person. So it's pretty simple and easy. We're going to save some money right off the bat. But the bottom line is, we know it's in Tri County's budget. They have twenty-three people in their budget department. County manager, I believe, will correct me if I totally get this wrong, but on a three hundred and fifty-million-ish budget for the last couple of years, we have nine people in our budget department, something like that. I think we're going to save, at least on the accounting department, on the accounting fees. I appreciated Commissioner Thomas pointing out that, listen, we believe we conduct business right now here in the county by building private, public-private partnerships to do the county business. We're going to do that. As far as the concerns pertaining to the impact we do have on other counties, I'm actually cognizant of that. I'm actually a little concerned about that myself. We've actually had some conversations with other county commissioners between the three of us. I've spoken, I had a very candid and actually, I found it very surprising conversation with two county commissioners in Adams County last week. And for those of you who believe this is a political issue, Republican versus Democrat, those two county commissioners that I spoke to in Adams County, well, there are no Republican county commissioners in Adams County. They were Democrats. And actually, they made it clear. They too intend to break from Tri County Health. So, I mean, I do appreciate some of the other commentary pertaining to masks, pertaining to the biology of the virus that we know has been present in our community. I don't know that that's germane for this decision today, though, folks. Today, we're talking about a business relationship between us and Tri County Health. To be very specific, we are talking about a governance relationship. You have felt free to come before us today, all of you. Some of you have expressed opinions that, guys, I do not agree with. I'll just tell you that right now. Some of you have expressed opinions that I do agree with. But the bottom line is, you're allowed to do that because we're all here together. You're all us. There is no us and them in this room. You're us, and we're going to do this decision together. When we talk to Tri County Health, when we talk to the Board of Tri County Health, it's a very simple equation. They have decided we are them. We are not us anymore. This is a deal that's gone sideways, that has gone wrong. I always appreciate Mr. Young for that very simple lesson he taught me, that very valuable lesson he taught me, to take a complex problem and break it down. Those of you who are wondering why, who the heck cares about an eighth-grade math teacher named Dave Young? Actually, he's your state treasurer right now. That was my eighth-grade algebra teacher. I saw him last week, too. He said he was proud of me. I said he was proud of him. He doesn't have red hair anymore. He said, actually, he has gray hair. That's okay. I have gray hair, too. We do not have a motion on the floor yet, but when it's appropriate, after your comments, Chair, I am prepared to make a motion in order to take action on this resolution, and I will be in favor of, I will be making a motion in favor of adopting this resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. You know, I would just summarize my comments by saying thank you. You know, as a commissioner, I represent everybody of all age groups, all backgrounds, all political affiliations. And, you know, I am of the firm belief that nobody comes here with ill intent. I think everyone wants to protect kids, protect their families. And when this all started, it was scary, and it's still frightening for many. I know when Dr. Fauci said two-point-one million people were going to die at the beginning of the pandemic, I hit the pause button and I didn't make any decisions. And I still don't make any decisions based on politics. At that time, I said, let's stay with our health department, even though there were members of my party that said it was time to part ways with them. That was not the time to part ways with Tri County Health. But certainly after eighteen months of engaged discussion with them, one theme is abundantly clear for all of us, regardless of your background. As Douglas County residents, local control of your public health decisions is paramount, and that's consistent with forty-nine out of the sixty-four counties in the state that have their own local health department. I think we've heard very clearly from staff that there will be no gaps. There will be continuity of services as it relates to public health. The difference for today's purposes is that you will now have local control over public health decision-making. You know, I've said it before and I'll say it again, there's nothing special about me. I'm just a dad with three kids. And I remember very clearly, you know, taking my daughter to the daddy-daughter sweetheart ball at the Highlands Ranch Mansion for every year of her life, well, pretty much three until thirteen. And I remember showing up at that Highlands Ranch Mansion with my thirteen-year-old, and we looked around and she said, Dad, you know, I think I'm just too old to be here. And it dawned on me that she was just, you know, too big to be small. And in a lot of ways, Douglas County is just too big to be small. We joined Tri County when we were four thousand people with three hundred and fifty-seven thousand. This isn't a divorce from Tri County Health. It's just an empty nest, and that's okay. It's okay for kids to grow up and to move on and to do new things. I will say, as we heard from staff, we are paid through the end of the year with Tri County Health. They have represented to us that those services will continue. I think we heard a lot of really good testimony, and certainly from Mr. Poploski, I hope I'm pronouncing your name right. There we go, Poploski, okay. And one of the issues we heard was about cost. I think Commissioner Teal identified clearly that we have thought about cost significantly. I think Commissioner Teal identified clearly that we have thought about cost significantly. We spent a year thinking through this, talking about it, working through all of the different programs, and the Public Health Advisory Committee, and the CHAW, and the different feasibilities that we've looked at and will continue to look at. But I will say, this county, through conservative budgeting, doesn't have virtually any debt whatsoever. We have reserves, and by the way, we also have $68.2 million in ARPA funds that the federal government has asked us to spend, part of which can be used for public health services. So, I will say that due to the hard work of staff, our county manager, and many others, primarily our citizens, who are some of the most wealthy in the entire country, we have a very healthy and sound budgeting process in Douglas County, and I think we're fiscally sound when it comes to all of our expenditures. I do want to emphasize, again, the point that Commissioner Teal made, which is, just in a finance department at Tri-County Health, where they have 23 full-time employees, we might have four or five. There's a remarkable savings when it comes to how Douglas County operates lean and mean in terms of providing services. So, I just wanted to share that. I want to do, again, really thank each of you and everybody online for spending their time with us. Again, we work for you, not the other way around. I know it's getting late on a Tuesday evening. So, with that, I will, unless there's any additional comment, I will bring it back to the board for a motion.
Chair, if it pleases the board, I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution withdrawing from the Tri-County Health Department and forming a Douglas County Public Health Agency.
Second.
There is a first and second. Is there any further discussion? You know, as I attempted to do earlier, and I appreciate council reorganizing us a bit for the benefit of our citizens, I would like to make a friendly amendment to this motion, this resolution, to add the recitals that I referenced earlier, and I, for the benefit of the board, I'm happy to read those again unless memory serves.
Please do.
Okay. So, my suggestion or friendly amendment to Commissioner Teal's motion would be to add two recitals following the third recital in this resolution, the first of which would be, whereas Tri-County Health Department has already been paid to continue to provide services for Douglas County residents until the end of 2021, and whereas the board has relied upon the express representations of Tri-County Health Department, that it will commit to providing services as long as necessary to ensure a smooth transition. And those would be the two additional recitals to the resolution.
So, I will just make a comment that it is true that Douglas County has paid for services through 2021. So, I do agree with that statement. I'm not sure that I have seen in writing and agree with the second one.
I'll be happy to accept the first recital, as mentioned, as a friendly amendment.
Thank you for that. If it pleases the board, I'm happy to provide the statement directly from Tri-County Health, which is where the fifth recital came from. And again, it was the representation, quote, that they will commit to providing services as long as necessary to ensure a smooth transition. And I will ask Mr. Ingalls to confirm that statement from Tri-County Health.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't remember the context of that statement. I do believe it was from Dr. Douglas, and that is an accurate quote.
Thank you, Mr. Ingalls.
Chair, if I may, I guess my only concern now is that we are coming to a period of negotiation. You know, I mean, I hearken back to my original comments of this is a business deal, a business relationship that has gone sour. Of course, magnified, because it's not just a simple business deal involving commerce, but it is one of governance. And whereas I do agree with the spirit of the statement, my concern is to formalize that in our resolution, it already begins limiting our negotiations. And I would hate for it to be taken as a form of promise, because the reality is, is that I don't think we have assurances from the other communities that are a party to Tri- County, and I don't feel like we have official assurances from the governance of Tri-County at this time that there is that commitment to maintain service on their part. Therefore, I guess I just have concerns about entering that into this resolution. And please understand, I'm not saying that that's something that should be apart from our public dialogue, but entering that into this resolution, I feel could limit our ongoing negotiations with Tri-County to actually do exactly what that statement says, in that ensure that there is a seamless, you know, public health service coverage from Tri-County to Douglas County. That's, that's my thoughts. Of course, I am open to further discussion by my colleagues, but that's my thoughts at this moment.
So, I'll back up with Commissioner Teal is saying, I did read an email from Dr. Douglas that he indicated, he figured that last week was probably the beginning of the end of our relationship, and he indicated that they would continue to provide services as they always had. My comment was that I have not seen that from Tri-County Health, meaning their Board of Health. Dr. Douglas works under the direction of the Board of Health, just like Doug, our county manager, can't say something that if, it's not blessed by the three county commissioners. And that was the focus of my comment, that while we might have heard this from Dr. Douglas, that is not Tri-County Health, and I'm not comfortable putting that in our resolution.
Yeah, well, thank you for that, board. So, just to maybe provide some additional clarity, it is unequivocally certain, certainly from the comments we see from staff and from county council, our expectation that they will continue to provide services because we have paid for them through the end of the year. I am a yes vote today because of no gaps and continuity of services, among the many other reasons that were shared earlier. But having no gaps and continuity of services is a top priority of mine, and I wouldn't be moving forward today unless two things occurred. One, that clear commitment by contract that we are paid through the end of the year, and those services will continue through the end of the year based upon that contract. And secondly, again, that express representation from an agent of Tri-County Health, that they will continue, they will commit to providing services as long as necessary. To me, not only was that a statement from an agent of Tri-County Health, but it was a clear commitment that we could rely upon in order to move forward. I do have a copy of that specific statement, and if it would please the board, I'm pleased to provide that. We did receive an email from Dr. Douglas. This is from the actual statement from Dr. Douglas that was released from Tri-County Health. And again, he says, according to this statement, we are committed to keeping Douglas County safe and healthy, and will continue to provide these services as long as necessary to make the transition as smooth as possible for the county's residents and our staff. So, that was the official statement from Tri-County Health. I do have that here, and I'm happy to submit that to council as part of our record for today.
We can label that Exhibit 1.
Mr. Ingalls, do we have the letter from the representatives? I thought that was submitted as an exhibit as well.
Let me back up. The letter that you read into the record, because it's already been read into the record, I did not anticipate you wanted to submit it as well, but we can do that. Let's call that Exhibit 1, and this letter from, email letter from Dr. Douglas, Exhibit 2.
And so, again, I would just, I would ask my board to include that, because, again, I think it is so critically relevant that our citizens have no gaps in services, and that we emphasize that we are relying upon the representations of Tri-County Health as one of our rationales for moving forward today. And regardless, I would certainly say that just as one commissioner, that is a critical basis under which I am moving forward, is that representation.
May I ask you to state the recital again in dispute?
Yes, sir. So, the fifth recital as a friendly amendment would be, whereas the board has relied upon the express representations of TCHD, that it will commit to providing services as long as necessary to ensure a smooth transition. And again, that recital just came from the statement that was released by Tri-County Health.
My concern to put that in as a whereas, is it's a, I'm concerned that it is a hedge on the logic, and it can be, to have it in this resolution brings up the possibility that there is a dependency upon the continuation of that expression of commitment. And therefore, it brings up, as a whereas in this resolution, it brings up the logical flaw that were they to remove that commitment to provide service, as you have, as your recital articulates, then that, then the underlying logic behind this resolution is thereby undermined.
And I would agree with that. I would just reemphasize my perspective as just one commissioner, that I, that is a critical element in my logic and a critical representation that I am relying on in order to vote yes today.
Well, I certainly respect that, Chair.
Could I add? I don't, I'm not sure we lose anything by including that. No doubt, it has been a public statement issued by Tri-County Health that certainly the public is already aware of. I think it is probably incumbent upon us to identify that statement as having been received and relied upon.
Well, by the way, Commissioner Thomas, if you want to jump in here, jump in. I will.
I'm ready to when you have time for me.
Ma'am, we always have time for you. Please go ahead. I will prepare my, I will prepare my comments.
My concern is that it is not completely honest, because we know that one of our partners has reached out to us with their concerns in the form of a letter, and it indicates that they are not going to support us going forward on our own. So, if we include Dr. Douglas's statement, I think we need to include the other one. I would be in favor of accepting the first amendment and not the second.
Yeah, and please excuse the probable logical neuroses of 23 years in the software industry, and finding problems and chasing out problems through thousands of lines of code. And it's all a matter of logic. It's a matter of if, then, it's a matter of yes, no, is where I'm coming from here. Is it's a, and please pardon me for the use of this language, but it's a flaw in the logic to place it in the whereas, because in the whereas, we are outlining our basis for the resolutions, then, the be it resolved portions. And so, the problem is to accept in the whereas statement by Tri-County Health that they will provide service, it's automatically undermined, and will go forward to conceivably undermine the logic and undermine the validity of the entire resolution if then that commitment that is spoken of is withdrawn. And therefore, that's the nature of where I would rather not, I would not accept this as a friendly at this time, Mr. Chair. And, Mr. Chair, we're a small group, we're a congenial group, and so, it is very, I know I'm going to be the first one to say this this year, but Chair, call the question.
The question has been called. Is there a second on that?
I believe we did, if Commissioner Thomas accepted the friendly, I believe we do have a second.
I accepted the first amendment.
And I did accept the first amendment as a friendly.
Okay. So, we have a first and second on the acceptance of the friendly amendment to the resolution. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. Do we need to have an additional vote for the entire resolution?
The way I interpret what you just did is because the original motion was amended, it was accepted, and the second also accepted, you have passed the primary motion.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there any additional discussion or comment from the board?
My only comment is that we have not taken this lightly. This all started in July of 2020, when I was with Commissioners Partridge and Layden, and I made the motion to leave Tri-County Health way back then. So, this isn't something that we're just deciding since last Monday. Our staff has been working, as you can see by that book, since July of last year. They have made, under the direction of Barbara Drake, we've pulled together an ad hoc committee of subject matter experts, committee members, and we are going to continue to do this. It will be done right, and I believe people will look back years from now and think, they did a great job. Congratulations. Thank you, board.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Teal?
Well, once again, thank you for everyone who came out today. Thank you for lending your voice to this process. Please know that you are always welcome to come before us and give us your opinions and give us, and share with us your vision for the future of this county.
Thank you for that, board. And I'll just say, for me as one commissioner, I am relying directly upon Tri-County's representation that services will continue. We heard that expressly from them. We certainly have also heard from representatives in Arapahoe County associated with their current position. I think it would be a massive error for Arapahoe County or any other body elected or otherwise to deny or try to deprive Douglas County citizens of continuous services going forward. Again, thank you to everyone for showing up today. We appreciate your time with us. Have a good rest of your night. This meeting's adjourned.